Well, thank you.
It's 6:00. We're going to call the meeting to order. The May 7 meeting of the Slough Meadow Planning Board. Person with the master general law, we're recording the meeting for the minutes, and Elcat is taping the meeting. Anyone else who's recording the meeting, please identify yourself and your organization. Hearing none, we will proceed. We have present Lou Moravito, Russ Denver, Ty Richards, and George Kingston. Missing is John Torsia at the moment. We have minutes from April 2nd. Any comments or questions on that? Motion to approve the minutes for April 2nd.
So moved.
Have a second.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Minutes of April 16th.
So moved.
Second, from somebody?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have a site plan waiver request for a rooftop photovoltaic solar at 136 Denzilow Road.
Okay. SPRW 2019-13, rooftop photovoltaic. Yep, sorry. Solar for Denzilow Road. Request by applicant for a site plan waiver for a rooftop photovoltaic solar system at 136 Denzilow Road. Assessors parcel ID 10-16-2. Located in industrial garden zoning district. Applicant is Todd Sayurka of Green Earth Energy Photovoltaic Corporation.
Okay. Anyone here for that application?
No.
Well, this is a straightforward rooftop, an industrial garden park zone, so I think there's no real issue here. Any discussion? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the waiver of site plan?
So moved.
Have a second.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That's done. Bella Vista Estates Phase 2 update. Someone here to address that?
Yes. Good evening. I'm Brian Fitzgerald. I'm an attorney with a law firm, Fitzgerald Attorneys at Law.
Phil Prejovic here.
The trustee.
Right.
Thank you. I'm also the trustee of Bella Vista Holdings Realty Trust. So we were just here just to provide you with an update. We will be coming before you on May 21st with respect to a modification of the plan in which we are presenting an elimination of the roadway crossing. So I just want to confirm that you've got copies of the proposed modification of the plan in front of you.
Yes, the plan is not stamped.
Not stamped by Mr.?
By whoever did the plan.
By Mr. Dambrogio.
Okay. Okay. The engineer who did the plan needs to stamp it?
Okay.
Okay.
All right. We'll have him do that.
Okay.
We'll have him do that. Okay. All right. Does all of the board members, do they have copies of the proposed modification?
Sure, not here. But basically, you're talking about putting cul-de-sacs in instead of the crossing.
Correct. Correct. Eliminating the roadway crossing and essentially just, you know, looping the utilities, the existing utilities that are at the end of Capri Drive and extending it out to Bella Vista Drive.
I assume that when you come before us on the 21st, you'll present us with agreements between the two, the owners of the two halves of the subdivision and the people who will be affected by that new cul-de-sac?
We have, we currently have an existing agreement with the owner of 57 Capri Drive.
Lot number with that thing?
That would be lot number...
10, I think?
Is it 10? Let me just see on my plan here.
No, it would be 8. It would be 26.
26.
26. Okay.
Yeah. And if you see on the proposal there, then the, you know, essentially, you know, there'd be, the temporary easement would become a permanent easement to the town, and we would have a plan to deed over the additional land to allow for the 30-foot easement.
I don't know if you need an agreement with the developer on the other side or not.
We have their cooperation. They submitted a letter of support.
Okay. So that will be in, on the 21st, we'll see that.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah. We did, we did previously submit that letter. We've also submitted all of the, we have the extension of the subdivision contract, which would also come up for discussion as well at that meeting. Just extending the subdivision approval currently expires in June of this year. So we'd be asking that it be extended until April of 2021. I've also submitted storm drainage easements for lot 19 and lot 10, as well as a proposed declaration of the homeowners association and maintenance covenant for, you know, the cul-de-sac and the stormwater drainage easements.
Okay. So it looks like we're ready to deal with that on the 21st.
Okay.
Anything additional we need to?
The only other thing that we were inquiring with respect to is just with respect to seeing if the board would be amenable. As you know, the existing covenant is in place. We are not asking for that covenant to be released, but what we would like is to hear the board's thoughts with respect to the issuance of building permits. In terms of, Anthony Carnavale is here as our contractor, and in terms of how many permits would we be?
Two.
Two. Yeah. Two, two building permits. Because we've been told that, you know, through the building department, that we need to come to the planning board in order to see.
We can deal with that also on the 21st then. Okay.
You want to do it?
Be the right way to do it.
Okay.
Because we really don't have anything in front of us on that tonight. You know, I would look to get a formal request from you for that.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. Okay.
So I just have a question.
Yeah.
So what's the building, what's the planning board's role in deciding whether or not you issue a building permit?
Well, it's whether or not covenants can be released.
The lot can be released from the covenant. The lots have to be, there has to be a request to release the lots from the covenant.
And that's our, what we got.
So we're not issuing, we're not making a decision on issuing a building permit?
No, but he can't issue a building permit.
So I just want to make that perfectly clear.
Yeah.
So.
Until we've released.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, I think there was one other thing. Oh, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
No, 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 you go. I think when I was reviewing through the material that I received, I didn't think that the plan review application checklist was completed either. I think mine was blank in the stuff that I received.
Okay. So that needs to be resolved before we can comment on this. Thank you for noticing that.
Yeah. It was...
The plan review application checklist?
Yes.
Okay.
Steve, I think Steve and Connie had discussion about that on the May 3 meeting.
No, he has to complete that plan review, that checklist, the plans and manuals.
Right.
Okay.
If I may?
Yeah.
The Department of Public Works Deputy Superintendent and I had a conversation today. Just be mindful that when you present these revised plans, you present all of the plan sheets that are affected by the modification. So they are going to be looking at the grading and the drainage as it pertains to the modification proposal. So the three plan sheets that we have here are not sit-stamped. They're not significant. They're not enough. You need to have all of the plan sheets drawn to the specifications that you are proposing, and they have to be stamped by your engineer before we'll take them in, put a review.
Okay.
Good.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. We wanted to thank you for your time because we just wanted to make sure that we had everything in order for the 21st. So thank you very much.
Move right along. Is anyone here from Hidden Pines? Hearing none, we will skip over Hidden Pines because there's nobody here to talk about. And move right along to, we've got everything on form revisions, and nothing really new on the master plan, so let's start talking about mixed-use zoning.
What's up with that?
What? What's up with that? You all should have gotten the draft dated the April 29th. And have you folks seen the draft?
No.
No. Do we have copies of that, four of them?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought, no. I can email that to you right now if you have your, I got a phone, I can bring it up here.
Okay. Basically, what happened was on the 29th, Connie and I got together, and we noticed that John Torsia is down here. We add him to the roll for the minutes. Connie and I went through the draft that we had previously and considered all of the suggestions that had been made by the board and tried to bang together something that makes, that made sense and that covered everything without being so specific that it limited it us, okay? Concept being that the, a mixed-use development will be under special permit. And so the details of a specific proposal, we dealt with in the special permit, and this is here to provide the overall framework. We did incorporate some significant things that I know the board was interested in. For instance, the, at the very end, we have the mix, the, yeah, the... It must be somewhere.
The association.
No, that, something else here. On having all three types of development there. Residential, commercial, and...
I didn't see that.
We did have it in here, I'm trying to remember where we put it. In the general description we have, it's consisting of mixture of residential, commercial, and business uses. But then there was also something very specific in here. We got the numbers in for dimensions and setbacks. We got the utility requirements, the parking requirements, the design review, dedicated Review system, journey by law.
I do remember seeing some percentages put in.
Yeah, there's percentages that are on page two.
Yeah.
No, I meant of the, oh, okay. Yeah. Total gross floor devoted to commercial and business.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I do...
Yeah. That's what we, that's where we had it.
Well, here, uses allowed by special permit is 3.1.
Yeah.
But you're right, it does not appear that there be a, as Ty had kind of pushed for, a percentage of each type of housing.
Well, I wanted to make sure, not quite that specific, but wanted to make sure that we had three separate uses so that it wasn't like a residential project with three different types of homes as opposed to a mixed use, which is legitimately a mixed use, which would be residential, commercial, and retail, let's say.
Right.
Well, but what's scary though, so just, if you're just the straight reading of 3.1, and I'll ask the attorney if she wants to add anything further. So it says, following uses are permitted. Then you list the single-family townhouses or multifamily, and there is no, there's no then requirement to have all three, the way it's written.
Right.
And I think that we wanted to have...
Or just pick three from the list.
Well, no. They essentially could put all, the following uses are permitted.
Right.
I think you, we need some clarifying...
Whoa, 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 I see what you're, yeah, 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 yeah.
The way it could be interpreted.
I see it now.
I think...
It could all be one kind as opposed to...
Correct. Right. And I think we need some clarifying language.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
She could help us with, but...
Well, I'm sorry. Should I speak? Can I speak? No, I guess.
Through the chair.
So I guess, can, maybe if we did just a requirement that a mixed-use developer need to obtain a special permit, and then you put... I mean, you're going to have your schedule of uses, right?
Right.
Like, that you're going to have anyway. So maybe instead of saying uses allowed by special permit, you have something where language about a special permit being required for a mixed-use development.
Right. We have that.
And then you can have this language, business and commercial uses compatible with and supportive of, and in connect, something like in connection with or residential uses, and then list everything in the table.
Now, what I'm more concerned about is under three, if I can.
Sure.
Okay. So you have 3.1?
Yep. No, I see it.
Okay. So the way I read that...
No, I got your reading. I agree with you, like, that right now, there's no requirement that they do all three. It's just, they could be all single-family dwellings.
Now, through the special permit process, we could force that.
Right.
And that was our, that was our thought.
Okay.
Was that that would be through the special permit process what the mixture would be.
Okay.
At the very end, we do have here a lot under, and the formatting on this needs work.
Yeah.
Okay. The numbering is a little iffy. We haven't figured out exactly where it's going to fit into the bylaw yet, so we don't know what the top number is going to be. But at the very last paragraph, "A lot in the mixed-use district may contain more than one structure as a principal use," which is an exception from what we have now. "The planning board may grant approval for multiple structures on one lot only upon making a determination that the proposed development contains a mix of commercial, business, and residential uses." Okay. So what that says is that we do have to have all three types of uses. In terms of the types of residential dwellings that we were talking about, my feeling was that that was, is something that ought to be dealt with under special permit because it will be dependent very much on market conditions, okay, and things like that, that when the development is designed, the people who are designing it will have to make some judgment as to what the mixture is going to be. It may be that, for whatever reason, one of those uses may not actually be feasible. Okay? Maybe the single-family housing doesn't give them the density they want. Okay? And it has to be townhouses and multifamily.
Take that right now.
Where that, they choose not to do townhouses, just single-family and multifamily. That's something I, I thought we didn't want to constrain too deeply with the bylaw. That was my thinking.
Well, right, from my recollection.
Yeah.
And I am getting a little older, so it might be...
I'm older than you are.
I know. But I didn't, I think Ty had said something like, you know, 20, 20, 20, and the remaining 40 is up to the developer. You know, if you would like to pull back on that a little bit, at least, I think what I am most fearful of, and I'll just put it right out there, is having a large apartment complex. And I don't want that to happen.
And that's exactly, I mean, we don't have to go with a solution that I came up with because there's probably 1,000 solutions, but the problem I'm trying to solve is exactly what Russ just said, is mixed use has to be mixed use, not a residential project.
Well, mixed residential as well.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Mixed residential as well.
So what if under 3.1, we changed that to say, in a mixed-use development, "A mixture of all of the following uses..."
Must.
No, wait, 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 wait.
Well, because you don't want to require that they're single-family or whatever.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, the goal isn't to say, you must have this, you must have that, you must have this. The goal is to say, here's a list of 10 different possibilities that could fit within a mixed-use project. Pick three off the, a minimum of three off the list, and then I could legitimately say that's a mixed-use project.
Well, we're talking about two different things now. Okay. Russ is concerned about the residential aspect of the mixed use. Okay?
I am also, but that's not what I was talking about.
Right. But let's deal with Russ's concern first. Okay? Under the residential portion of this.
And I don't want to steal anyone else's.
Okay. We could say here, "In a mixed-use, all types of uses are permitted." All, a proportion of the residential. Okay. And...
I, I don't think you need to change any of that.
Yeah.
I think the only thing you need to change is on the second page, 3.14, is maybe break that down a little bit, what commercial uses and retail uses and office uses and stuff are. But other than that, what you're saying, what you're saying in, what it looks like you're saying here is, all of this stuff is approvable or allowable in a mixed-use zone, period.
That's what 3.1 says.
And it doesn't mean, it doesn't mean they have to do it.
Right.
It just means if they want to do this, and it's on the list, go ahead. You're more than welcome to.
That's what 3.1 says now. So what we could do, okay?
So I think keeping it simple is a good idea, like you've done.
If we go back to the last paragraph of the whole thing, "Under site development, location of buildings and structures." Okay? May grant approval for multiple structures on one lot only upon making a determination that proposed development contains a mixture of commercial, residential, business, and all three types of residential uses.
Well, if I may, through the chair?
Yes.
Have you given thought to other alternative forms of living, such as the workspace or to include besides your typical residential structure? But maybe with, we have a number of home business applications that come before us, and you have a generation that has come into, come to age where they want to be more of an entrepreneurial spirit. So maybe instead of just saying, well, you have to have a townhouse, a single-family, or a condo, or that type of traditional housing, might also want to add live-workspace or other innovative housing solutions to...
Home office is already, excuse me, but home office is already covered under the bylaw. Okay? So in this development, there's no reason why you couldn't have a home office in your apartment. Okay? Yeah. Home office means you get a computer and you're running your business out of your home, basically.
But a live-workspace isn't quite like that.
What's a live-workspace?
Well, a live-workspace might be where you do have your home office, but you might, you also entertain your, you know, you bring your clients in, you might have, you might live up above it, have a studio. For instance, you might be an artist. So you have your studio where people would come in and they would look at your product, and you would be able to engage in that business transaction. You would have a little more foot traffic than you would with a home office.
Well, I, yeah, I think we cover that though with the office, the commercial and business aspects of this. So that, I mean, if, as part of the commercial aspects, if you decided you wanted to have, what do they call it, the, who's the big company?
O-Creative.
That does share...
WeWork.
Share, WeWork, WeWork, okay, this type of thing, as part of your commercial space. That would be an allowable thing because it's an office.
Through, through the chair.
Yeah.
I agree with Connie and, I think, but I think it is addressed. It's just a question of scale.
Yeah.
So the traditional mixed use that I think we're thinking of is a 10,000-square-foot ground floor that's office and retail and restaurants, et cetera. And then upstairs are 25 apartments, and they're separated. This new pool unit that I, that I found, they're littler buildings. So it's on the ground floor, it almost, in, so you understand scale, it's like four garages. But up above the four garages, there are four units that are kind of associated with them. And those garages could be a garage, but it very easily could be a, who was the, who was here last week with their business where they do like, they do like the well?
The painting?
The painting?
The whitewashing.
The whitewash woman. You know, like, she could have her whitewash studio in the, in the ground, you know, on the ground floor. And, and it's all kind of integrated.
Yeah.
And, you know, so I think it's all addressed. It's just a question of scale, and it's allowed.
I mean, yeah, I agree with you. I think that the bylaw is written broadly enough that it would allow that those sorts of uses. And then the specifics of whether it's going to be your traditional apartment building with stuff on the bottom, or with these smaller units, that's what we do with special permit. Okay? Because as things evolve, I'm sure that this is going to be built in phases.
Mm-hmm.
And phase one goes in, and phase two goes in five years later. The economy has changed, the technology has changed, the way people live has changed. So that aspect of it, a special permit for that aspect of it is, you can either modify the special permit to account for it or whatever. But as long as it's within the overall bylaw, we don't have, the special permit is something that can be dealt with the planning board. It doesn't have to go to town council. And that's what we're trying to do, is make sure it's broad enough, I think, that it doesn't need to be modified every time a new project comes in, but it also gives us the control that we're looking for. So here's what I suggested, Russ, is we have here, "Determination that proposed development contains a mix of commercial, business, and all three types of permitted residential uses." Okay? And then that, that covers that.
Does that require a reen a single family, though?
Yeah. Can you not use all? Can you use?
A mix of?
A mix of.
A mix of?
Any type of residential, any type of residential use.
I'm fine with a mix of.
Yeah, mix is fine with me.
A mix of.
Mix on, okay.
Yeah. I'm fine with that. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't want to force this, to build stuff they can't sell on.
Right.
It's the very last one.
It doesn't do anybody any good.
3.?
No, I think he's kind of...
You're putting it the last paragraph.
All the way at the bottom.
So this would read, "The planning board may grant approval for multiple structures on one lot only upon making a determination that the proposed development contains a mix of commercial, business, and a mix of residential uses." A mix of permitted residential uses.
Outlined section, whatever.
3.
Thank you.
This is fine. Yeah. Well, I don't think you need, okay, you need the reference necessarily.
Okay. So in 3.2, is that where you want to put, I guess you have the minimum of five, maximum 10, that's fine.
Yeah.
Um, is that where you want to put the mix, that it's at least two of the permitted business uses or something in there? Again, and this is going to sound strange coming out of a developer's mouth, but I actually like rules. I don't mind a little bit of, a little bit of frame on the...
Yeah, that's fine.
On it to say, no, it's at least two, and, you know, and it works both ways because then, you know, it's at least...
It's clear.
Right. The board is saying, no, we want at least two, and then when we get here, we're able to say, we have at least two. And, you know, we comply.
I agree with you, Jen. I like, put it in this section, two commercial uses or two non-residential uses. I mean, residential plus two non-residential. Sounds good to me.
So that's...
Now, my question is, by the way, I don't mean to be interrupting through the chair. Yeah. I've been thinking a lot about this 5% and 10%. What do you think about it?
I like 5 and 10. I could go higher if you wanted. I can go lower if you wanted.
I'm thinking that, that, I, I'm thinking I don't want to tie your hand to 10% on the big side because, you know...
I think we ran, I think we ran traffic at about 70-plus thousand square feet of commercial, which would be somewhere between 10 and 15%.
See, what I'm thinking is, not today, not tomorrow, and this is a minimum number anyways, so, so you don't have to do, if it were 20 percent, you don't have to do 20 percent. But I, I feel that I, you should have the flexibility to creep a little more than 10 percent if you, if you, you know, had a good reason to do so.
Again, I've always wanted to be very transparent, we've always wanted to be very transparent with the board on, on, it's, it's not, it's not big, it's, it's niche.
Yeah, and, and, and what I'm saying is kind of like to your benefit, and I'm not trying to necessarily do that, but if you had something really nice going on that fit within that category and you took your project over 10 percent, I hate to see you have to say, ah, geez, we can't do it.
Okay, agreed, for that cap to go to 15 or 20, that, that's.
But I, but I don't know how the rest of the guys feel.
Russ?
I'm going to tell you how I feel. So I don't want to go much higher than go. We also have a, we also want to have a thriving local economy. And if we put too much in one location, it draws away from other commercial and retail properties in town, and I don't wish to do that.
I'm thinking like, like, let's say hypothetically, this is just a hypothetical, is that the YMCA says, hey, you know, we really need a location in East Long Meadow, and a mixed use project would be a good place for us to be. And we, and, and John says, ah, sorry, I can't do the YMCA because it takes me over my 10 percent.
But he could do a local health club.
Yeah, but that's not the same. But in any event, I'm just, I'm just throwing out an example, so we can leave it at 10 or we can move it off a little bit.
How does the board feel about 15?
I mean, it's, it's a group decision.
15 is the max, 17 is the.
That'd be fine.
That'd be better.
I'm fine with that.
Let's make it 15.
It's 20 too much.
Okay.
So under three two B?
Yeah, it becomes 15, not exceed 15 percent. And, you know, I, we, we make the distinction between business and commercial, very few other towns do.
Yeah.
Okay, and the reason for that was to keep retail further isolated from residential zones, that was the reasoning behind it, it was written that way originally. Here, it doesn't make sense to make that distinction because we're putting them in with residential. So I, I, I don't think it's necessary to say you must have commercial and business because, you know, it depends on what mix makes sense.
And also what the market forces on.
Yeah, yeah, and what tenants you can find.
And there's, there's going to be a column, so is there going to be a column in three point one?
Uses.
Column uses, okay.
Yeah, and a table of uses.
All right, so, call it Fred, I don't care what you call it. There's going to be a pile of uses, that's good.
So I, I had one more thing that I questioned Connie on, is, we ended up having a lengthy discussion about, for lack of a better phrase, it was a host agreement.
Yeah.
So Connie checked with town council, they believed, the town attorney, that it should not be part of the.
Bylaw?
Bylaw, but it just essentially, we would make that within the special permit process.
Yes, so you can get, you can create a memorandum and not call it a host agreement.
Right, memorandum of agreement, he wants to develop, yeah, okay.
I, I call it a developer agreement.
Yeah.
Call it Fred.
I just want to let you know that we had followed up on that question, and, yeah.
Because that would be something that would come out of an impact study once something's proposed.
Yeah.
And you, you don't know what's, the impacts are going to be until you see what your plans are, okay? But we certainly have the, the right under special permit to ask for that.
Yeah.
Okay, so that makes sense.
So thank you for following up, yeah, appreciate it.
Four point two. Roll back to 10?
Yep.
Well, what happened at 12?
We can go to 12, if you'd like.
I thought we.
Yeah, I thought we had talked about that.
I thought we talked about 12.
Make it 12.
Fifteen was too high, and 10 was too low, and 12 would be.
Probably 12. Board happy with that?
I am. So can we just, I think if my memory holds true, so the town council wanted a, what, did they want a minimum of 40 acres? And we thought that that was too high, we did a study from the board of assessors, and how, how many acres, how many 40 acre lots did we end up with? Very few, right?
Very few.
Like two?
Yeah.
And they were both currently occupied?
Yeah.
With industry?
Yeah. So the 20.
So I, I feel really good at 20, I mean, I.
I do too.
That's really good.
And one of the things that does is, is for this particular site, allows for two different special permits, if, you know, I mean, they're not going to develop 40 acres at once.
Yeah.
They know that, we know that. If you come in with a 20 acre proposal, and then 10 years from now you come with another 20 acre proposal, you know, it depends on how you guys want to proceed, I don't know what your, your plans are going to be, you probably don't know yet either, but.
Yeah, I was fine with 20, I just want to raise that it was so limiting, that 40 acre, that it really wasn't feasible.
It basically meant, we're doing this for one piece of property.
Yeah, exactly.
Which, to me.
And I, that didn't, that wasn't right, yeah.
Any other comments on the board? John, anything?
Paul, that? Curious, just jumping to four point five, I know we had talked a little bit about adding public transportation or ride share openings, and some of these, I mean, it might not work for.
I saw that someplace, didn't I?
A very small mixed development, but perhaps adding some language about, you know, adding in public transportation.
We, we did have a paragraph in here on that. Four point 11B.
Okay, here.
Yeah, that's great, yeah. Lou, any additional comments?
George. At, on four point three, the building setbacks?
Yeah.
The side at 50?
Yeah.
Did that grow?
No, that was pretty much what we had originally done, and that was primarily because if you have a, you're budding another residential development, it fills a chess down, okay? And if you've got a 25 foot buffer, and then you've got 25 feet that you, the setback can be the building, okay? So you've got 25 feet between the building and the, the buffer. And the, the reason for that was because of the height of the building.
So, that's why, again, I'm totally not worried about going that way, that is, the board may or may not be aware, that is, we have a wetland car there and so, we're not going to be anywhere close to that line.
Right. The other side is the rail trail.
Yeah.
Which is essentially, you know, again, you're going to want to probably access the rail trail.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
You know, and, and you, you realize that you also got cable in, in the rail trail, okay? There are three very high speed cables. One belongs to Mass Mutual, one belongs to the town, and one, I believe, is available for.
Right.
Okay, so, I mean, just as a selling point for businesses and residents, residents there, it's, it's an important piece of infrastructure. But again, people on the rail trail aren't necessarily going to be wanting to look at tall buildings.
That's fine.
So that's why it's, it's that way. I think you can, you've got enough room there that it'll fit.
Plenty of room, because it's just a, where you put the puzzle pieces, that's fine.
I understand, I understand. The rear, you're on, you're budding industry, so 25 feet makes sense, and we talked about significant setback from the road, so that it wouldn't be, it wouldn't look as urban as some other mixed use developments like, you know, it's not like Lubbock Square in Hartford, except West Hartford, where you're in a, basically, an urban area.
No, it's fine. Accessory garage units, additional garage units?
We do address that in here.
But not, again, one of those flexibility things?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I don't have a problem with them, provided they look protracted.
Yeah, they look like, they look like the rest of the buildings, so.
Well, what we should do is include, make sure that's included in the table of uses, okay? Because we do have something in there that is limiting in certain zones, you can't have that. So we need to make sure that that's in the table of uses.
I'm sorry, what do you want in the table of uses?
Accessory garages.
Garages as an accessory structure.
Yeah.
So I, you know, I could envision having a couple of different types of garage.
Yeah.
So you have a townhouse, you'll have a garage.
Right.
You'll have a multifamily building that I could see having, just, you know, on one side of the building, just, you know, instead of having units on that side facing the parking lot, you'd literally have garages.
Yeah.
And I think I showed you that, that picture from Cherry Hill. You'd have these, these little buildings that I talked about, that could be that type of garage.
Right.
And then we'd envision, you know, literally an accessory, a separate garage building, you know, that particularly like we talked about along the buffer, to the, to the industrial garden to the south.
Yeah.
You know, that's, you know, put a little garage building, a couple of garage buildings there, and, you know.
This is New England, and it does snow.
Yeah. Oh, that's, one of the bigger changes that I've had to adjust to is that the garage is a very, going to be a very desirable thing here to have.
Absolutely.
If you, you know, what's it, May, May, what's that thing on Maple, May Fair, May, Maywood?
Down in Auburn East.
Yeah.
And Field, it's Mayfield.
Mayfield, every unit has a garage.
Yeah, it's a nice project.
And they're going gangbusters.
Through the chair, what is, what is the board, I just want to get everybody's take on the maximum height of 50, what do you think of that?
I had that as a question, and my question was, how many floor, how many story do you envision 50 feet to be?
Commercial, mixed use, three, residential could be four.
Remember he, he went through a presentation about, you've got commercial, and then you need so much space before your next residential for all the.
All your ductwork.
Fixtures, doorwork, and stuff like this.
So you guys are comfortable with the four floors?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, 50 feet is, is not outrageous, given the building that's there now.
Yeah.
Okay, so, and it, with the setback from the road, you're not going to have.
Wouldn't want it being immediately, but you know, a variation, I think, would be acceptable.
Yeah, we would envision three, the mixed use in the front, three stories, and then four in the back.
Yeah, I think that, that makes sense, it's, it's not going to look ugly or anything, you know? It's not something you want to plop down next to Center Square.
No.
Out there, it would make sense. So is there, with the changes we've just discussed, is there a general agreement that this framework looks good, okay? If there is, I'm going to ask Connie to do two things, one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I do have one more, Connie, I just, I just saw a note here ahead. Okay, so we've got one space per bedroom.
Yeah.
What about a three bedroom unit?
Three spaces.
Three spaces.
The only three bedroom units would really be a townhouse?
Yeah.
So you'd have a, you know, either a one or two car garage in the driveway?
Okay. Me, the, I'm sorry, one, one space per bedroom, some, some units will only have one car associated with them, some may have three, okay? I know people in my neighborhood that have four or five cars in their driveway, and they only have two drivers. I mean, you know, this, this happens. So the, the point is, with that many units, do you have enough on average for everybody? So if we're comfortable with this, I'm going to ask Connie to do two things, one is to find a place in the bylaw where this will fit, okay? And give it the overall number for whatever section, new section that's going to be, because we're running out of numbers, quite frankly. And then to go through and regularize the numbering, so that it's consistent throughout it. You know what I'm saying, Connie, we have places where we have A, B, C, some places where we just have additional numbers.
George sings it out.
And then we've got I, what?
It sounds like you're singing the ABCs.
Yeah.
You know how hard it is to say your ABCs without singing it? You know how hard it is to do it without singing it?
And some places, we've, we've got Roman numerals, and, you know, it, it should be consistent, and that's because we cut and paste, okay? But it should be consistent. And when we've got that, and the table of uses, and the dimensional table.
I'll pass that thing.
When she has all that pulled, put together, hopefully by the 21st, we can vote on it and send it to the council.
Good.
Yeah, please.
If I may, was there still going to plan on being a joint meeting with the town council subcommittee?
I, I suspect that what will happen is, once we, once we finalize it, okay, and send it to the council, the council will remand it to their subcommittee, at which point we can meet with the subcommittee to go through it, okay?
Okay.
Just trying to think about the right procedures.
Right.
Until we give them something solid, there's nothing to talk about, okay? They have the right to amend this.
No, I understand.
The council can, okay? We're saying their recommendation, they're the ones who have to finalize it and accept it. Typically, they don't like to do a whole lot of amending, but they certainly can. And that's where their zoning subcommittee comes in, okay? They would recommend possible tweaks to this. But I, I think we've got something that I think we can live with, I think they can live with, and some point, we've got to pull the trigger and go forward.
I'm ready.
So.
Yeah, let's get it done.
And Connie will be happy to work with you if you need me on the numbering and so on, and fitting it in.
Can we just go over that list, you want to find a place in the bylaw that this amendment will fit, you want it numbered accordingly, you want the table of uses updated, is that, what do you want me to?
Yeah, the proposed, we need to go through the proposed additional column on the table of uses, and make sure that we've got everything in there that should be in there and nothing that shouldn't be in there.
Okay.
And then likewise, we have to create a table for the, a column for the dimensional table, okay, that includes the dimensions that we, we outlined here. So that's in the table as well as in the section of the bylaw.
Okay.
Because a lot of people will just go to the table to find out.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
I do, but we're, so we're in the process of recodifying our, our bylaws and our zoning codes, so let me check in with our town clerk to see when that is going to be, where we are on that.
Okay.
Because the zoning bylaw and the general bylaw will be merged, so I don't, I, I want to make sure we're all on, literally on the same page.
Right.
Okay, pardon the pun.
Sure.
We also have to update, we also have to include a definition for mixed use.
We, we have that.
Do we have it? And, and we have to amend, and want to put that definition in the table of definitions.
Yes, and, and you have that noted here, add this definition to the section.
Yeah, okay, but we don't, okay.
Yeah.
Do we have a definition?
Yeah, it's right here. Mixed use development shall mean a development consisting of a mixture of residential, commercial, and business uses and building types to include, yada, yada, with or without business, commercial spaces, business and commercial buildings, and open space.
So I'm going to take that, or be it an inserted?
As is.
Can we add recreation? Commercial buildings, comma, recreation, and open space?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it matches what you had at the bottom?
That, that makes sense, recreation.
Make sure my forecast is covered.
Yeah. So that, that's our definition. Okay, so this is the package we need to put together, all the different parts that we're going to modify in, in the, in the bylaw. And then when, when you get around to recoding it, we can, hopefully all of this will just be sucked into the overall bylaw, under, under whatever chapter they want to call it.
Okay, I will do so.
Okay. I'd be happy to work with you on that if you.
I appreciate it.
Me to do that, but.
So we'll vote on this at our next meeting.
Yep. We got there.
Now, we don't need nothing about the site plan, that's all going to fall under the special.
Special permit, yeah.
All right.
And then on the 21st, will you also be recommending that your next, your next agenda item gets adopted as well? That the site is.
Hopefully, hopefully, yeah.
Included as a mixed use district?
Okay.
Can we do that?
We can do that, yeah. Can we do that, yeah?
If I may, then, Mr. Chairman, so I brought this up, I had, I'd shot Connie an email about it, but just so more, everybody's on the same page, right? The developer is wanting to do sort of, they're transferring it just to a new company, but it's gonna be the same ownership, it's just.
Right, you wanna put it from the current owner into our entity.
Right, so.
Right, you're creating a new entity.
Question, you know, I think the town's attorney said, you know, pretty much could either do it now or later, but I'm wondering what the town, what the board is feeling, if we should do it now while our petition is still pending? Or recommend it till we do it after everything is completed?
We didn't wanna mess anything up.
Where we stand right now, okay, is we're finalizing a bylaw, which doesn't refer to the entity. We will then be asking for a change to the zoning map that a particular parcel will be under this new zone. That doesn't refer to the entity either, refers to a parcel number, okay? And whoever owns the parcel is irrelevant at this point.
I understand that, but we are the petitioner, and I don't know if that messes anything up.
Through the chair, if I may, so our town, town attorney said regarding the issue of transfer, the name of the applicant should either be changed, or if transfer has not been closed, evidence should be presented to satisfy the plant, the planning board, to the planning board that a new owner will succeed to all rights, titles, interests, obligations, et cetera.
So. So it would seem to me that I wouldn't wanna transfer until I knew that all the zoning was gonna be in place, I had my permits and everything else, because otherwise he's transferring the property to a partnership that may not exist if this thing doesn't get approved.
Well, no, the partnership's gonna exist no matter what.
Yeah, okay, but I mean, for this particular deal.
We're linked.
You know what I'm saying.
We're gonna do something with this.
We're gonna do something, so.
Well, but you understand my, my comment, yeah.
And I, I don't know what your, your timeline for closing is on this.
It's, that's, it's a non-issue, it's just, the only issue is whether us or M&amp;A Long Meadow LLC being the petitioner for this mixed-use bylaw, because we petitioned for the town to do the bylaw. If we then changed it, changed site ownership so that M&amp;A Long Meadow LLC is no longer an owner in this community, how that would affect our petition? 'Cause then the new entity would be the owner, and so, and would be the person in the, or would be the entity of the community.
But M&amp;A's still a partner in the partnership.
Yes. Yeah, so I, I, I think it would be, the simplest thing to do is go forward with the current petition.
Okay.
So there's no question, okay?
She says just to go forward with the current petition and wait.
Agreed.
Because with any luck, within, within six weeks, this will be done, okay? Unless Town Council throws up all over it, okay? Which I hope they don't do. So, you know, it's just a matter of scheduling hearings now and.
No, wait, wait.
That's fine.
And just not to complicate things.
It's not complicated at all.
Exactly, that's why we ask. That's why we ask.
Yeah.
It's not complicated.
Okay.
We're very easy.
Good.
It was those bookkeeping people that were asking the questions.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, they, they knack in the back of our heads once in a while.
So, I think we're all set. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much for doing that.
Connie did a lot on it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Connie.
Thank you, Connie.
So we're, we're pretty close to being back on, on schedule.
Yes.
On this.
Yeah, thank you, you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other business we have before the board?
So, yeah. So item seven. So what, what will this entail?
So through the chair, if I may, advise you of this situation. The Department of Public Works and Planning and the Treasurer's Office and the Town Council are trying to do our bookkeeping, clean up our books. So a couple of months ago, I sent letters out to Bella Vista Estates, Dearborn Street Extension, Pondview Drive, Rustic Meadows, and Skyline, asking them to please advise us of where they were with their subdivision completion. The roads have not been accepted by the town.
Okay.
We've had phone calls complaining about the condition of the roads by the residents on these, of these subdivisions. So we're just trying to clean things up. Keller's Way, as you know, was, or you may not know, in 2012 was rescinded. We did our administrative housekeeping today, and reimbursement check is going to go to Mr. DeFranco, who was the original developer. He has about thirteen hundred dollars in the account.
Mark DeFranco?
Yes, yes. So we will clean that up, that'll get off our ledger, and we'll be done with Keller's Way. Just things fell, I think they fell through the cracks with the change of government and also the loss of your previous planner, and now we're just looking at matters that need to be addressed. Bella Vista Estates, they're going to, I believe, request an extension for the top coat of the pavement. That should be forthcoming, phase one, not phase two. But with the modification of the subdivision, he may move forward, because you don't wanna put that final top coat on our subdivision road until the heavy machinery has left the site.
Yeah, he's got houses in there under construction, so he'd probably like to get those wrapped up first, would imagine.
And Dearborn Street Extension, that's going to come back to revisit us because the two contractors, one had a death in the family, so they too will be coming back and discussing their final timeline. Pondview, I haven't heard from Pondview. Rustic Meadows is going to come back with a final timeline, and Skyline Drive, even though I've sent two letters out to them, I need to do a little more tracking. They did not pick up their letters, their certified letters. So we will take care of, of those matters, and hopefully, if the road construction is left incomplete, the town will implement the calling of the surety and take their money and complete the subdivision.
And do we have rules in place under the subdivision guidelines about how long they have to complete projects?
Two years.
Okay, so how many of these have exceeded the two years?
All of them.
So why would we be dealing with the first one listed if they haven't complied with the requirements from the town?
The first one listed, which was Bella Vista Estates, had requested an extension for the completion, which is five years over the years.
From us. Typically, what happens is, the two years gives the town then the right to take the surety and finish it. DPW doesn't like to do that.
Right, right, I understand.
So they don't pursue it. But Connie's right, we can't let this stuff just sit there forever. It needs to be dealt with.
There's also, you know, people who buy a home in there with the anticipation that the work is gonna be completed.
Oh, yeah.
And the street accepted.
Yeah, the third owner moves in and they finally get the top coat on.
Yeah, I mean, it's really.
I understand. You know, and.
It happens.
I mean.
So just.
Well, I'm glad you're following up on this, this is great.
Thank you, it was a collaborative effort. One, there is one point that people should be mindful of, the developer should be mindful, once that road is accepted by the towns, the town still retains twenty percent contingency for a year for that, for that surface to weather in the event that there is something that occurs. It's sort of like the warranty period, we're gonna guarantee this road. So there's still some money that remains in the coppers, in the town's coppers. If you're going to build your road, you build it to the specifications, you build it well, and you hope to get all of your money back, right? That would be the, so. I had other business. The Town Council approved to amend the zoning map for rezoning parcel twenty-seven dash one fifty-four A dash A, which is fifty-four, pardon me, fifty-one Prospect Street from residency to the Business Zoning District. What I might recommend is that the planning board authorize me to send a note to GIS. There's just some housekeeping to amend the map. Of course, a copy of the amended map also goes to the Department of Housing and Community Development for recording purposes. Would also entail updating our, our, our zoning bylaw because we referenced the map as being 2007. You could also hold off on that until we see this project that you previously heard go through. You do not have, you do not have to have a public hearing to amend the zoning map. But what I did for the other case was I, I wrote the legal ad so that the amendment to the zoning map would also be approved at the time that the mix was, should the mixed-use bylaw be approved, they would be approved concurrently. So you wouldn't be incurring additional advertising, advertising expense. I, I think we should just send the message out that we're updating the zoning map. I think we should also note that we're updating our zoning district maps effective 2019. I think that that's important.
Yes.
And just do our, continue to do our housekeeping in the event that Bethany and I win the lottery and we won't be here anymore, so.
Oh, we know you still keep coming back to work.
But I think that, you know, we had.
We can't believe that.
We've had, you know, we've had history, history shows us that things slip through the cracks, and we're trying to be neat and tidy and efficient.
Let's just about Lawrence Rich.
The hot-bellied, hot-bellied pig.
Mr. Rich had come in a couple of weeks ago to discuss his, and he, we invited him to come back after you had all had an opportunity to research, and I guess Mr. Rich is a no-show this evening.
So.
Is there a letter you would like me to send to him?
No. He, he hasn't made a formal petition for a zoning amendment, has he?
No, sir.
So it's, it's a moot point at this point. Personally, I'm, I'm opposed to pet zoning, quite frankly, because it's an endless pit, you know?
Thought you were gonna say endless pet. I, I thought he was too.
No, but you know what I'm saying? You get into iguanas and, you know, everything else.
A lot of exotic animals.
Yeah, it's, to me, it's a matter of the board's health. If an animal is not being kept in a healthy condition, then it's a board health issue. It's not, not a planning issue.
Yeah, I don't think.
It's not in our purview.
Okay, any other business?
Yeah, so I, I raised a procedural issue about people coming before the board to kind of give us updates when there's going to be a public hearing on their project.
Yeah.
And the reason I'm opposed to that is I don't wanna get into a situation where that individual now comes to their public hearing in front of the public and says, as you recall, when I met with you two weeks ago, I don't want people thinking that somehow they're not hearing everything. And I think that sets a bad precedent. If someone wants to send the planning board a letter about the progress of their project, which maybe we can read into the record or whatever, but I think it sends a, I think it sends a bad message. That's just me, so I just put that out there for your consideration.
I, I, I agree with you, I think that if someone wants to come to us, inform the board of progress or something like that, that it should go through the director, okay? That they should send a document to the director that says, this is what we're planning on doing, or this is where we are, and the director can then distribute that to, to us. I, I agree, it's one of the reasons that I don't meet with developers prior to their filing, because you don't want somebody saying, well, you encouraged me to do this, and now you're turning me down. You know, I, you can't do that, it just doesn't work. So I, I think that's, you know, like tonight, I'm not really sure what the purpose of that was, okay? Other than to have us nod at him and go, oh, yeah, that looks good. You know, that's not really what we're gonna be doing. So I, I know that, that the applicants really like to do it that way, but it, I think it is, it should be a matter of policy in the board that we do, that we, we receive testimony at hearings and we make decisions at hearings, not outside of that, okay?
And I felt almost like they were trying to get us to say, yes, they had everything. So that if they came in in two weeks and they didn't have everything, they would say, well, you told us we had everything, when that's what our director is here for.
Right.
For them to go to the director and say, all right, do I have everything in place?
Yeah.
I mean, that's part of the director's job.
They, they should really be strongly encouraged to have that pre-application meeting with the director.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
I, I don't know if, if you, as a developer, I don't know if you think I'm all that.
Um, wait, you know, as, as a developer, I like having a meeting with somebody. It doesn't have to be the planning board, because I don't wanna come into a public hearing and they go, geez, you missed a couple of things in your plan, when I could've saved people a lot of time by knowing that. But it doesn't have to be with the planning board. But it, but, but it's gotta be with someone with authority that can say, if I've made some mistakes, you know, to get me on the right path.
Yeah, that's what the director is.
In this case, Connie would be great.
Yeah, okay.
And I, and I, and I guess if you get pushback, perhaps maybe a, an email from the chair to whomever is appropriate about what our belief is in all of this and the process that we would like to follow.
Yeah.
I think it's, I think it's more transparent for the public. And I think that would be, would instill more confidence in the town and the town's board if we did it that way.
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other business before the board?
I just wanted to make a note, I won't be here for the June meeting, I believe it's June eighteenth.
Yes.
So I'll be out of the country.
Oh, very good.
Excuse us.
Wow, it's a place fun, I hope.
Going to Italy, for a study abroad. But that'll be the only meeting that I'll be missing, so.
Very good.
So why don't we talk about the July second meeting?
Okay.
Last year during that week, we did not meet.
And I think that would be a good practice again this year.
Vouched then.
Thank you.
To someone motion.
I'll make a motion that we do not meet on our regularly scheduled July second, 2019 meeting.
I'd like to second that, boy.
All in favor? And I'd like to remind the board that at our first meeting in June, John will be here, right?
No, we don't, it's a town election.
The town election, okay. Oh, good, John will not be here for the meeting in June then. At our June meeting, we will reorganize, okay, so think about that. We, typically in June, we reorganize the board, okay? I don't know who's, if anybody's term is up this year, yours is.
I am.
So you need to remind Denise.
I, I did.
Okay, fine. But, so if, if anybody wants to strive for higher office on the board, let us know, okay? Any other business?
What, you think I'm gonna give up the clerk's job?
I think, I think we're both up.
Oh, yeah, we got out of sync for a while.
Yeah, I know for sure I'm up.
Are you?
Oh, no, I think you're, you're still going. Yeah, they, I think I.
You look surprised, it looks like, really? How much longer have I got?
So I'm pretty sure that when Ralph Page's term was up, they appointed me, no, they appointed you to Ralph's term, and I was appointed to Mike Carabatta's term.
Yeah.
No, 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 who took Deb's?
I did.
Oh, you took Deb, that's right, yeah.
So he's the only one that's sort of out of sync, I don't know how long you were appointed for.
I think it was like to twenty-twenty-one, June of June third.
Off the top of my head, I'm sorry, if I don't have.
Anyway, are you, are you staying with us?
I have not heard back, I sent an email maybe Friday or so of last week.
Well, she's, she's been busy.
She's calling us only for interviews to see.
Does he, does he come to meetings, is he a pain in the neck?
He seems to be great, Denise. See, me, you bought me lunch several times, bought him a couple of good words for him.
Okay, any other business?
Move to a germ.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.